All right, it is seven oh two. We will call our Tuesday, March twenty first city council meeting to order. Let's start the real call.
Councilman Becker?
Here.
Councilman Hartwig?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Schultz?
Here.
President Sherr?
Here. Agenda item three is a public hearing on the discontinuance and vacation of North Fourth Street between Armenia Street and Munn Street. And based on the size of our crowd in attendance this evening, I am going to ask that all comments, A, be germane to the vacation of North Fourth Street and remain within a three-minute window. So we do have two people signed up for public hearing in person. So when you are, when your name is called, if you would come up to our podium, state your name, state your address, and then the reason that you are speaking. So we'll start with Jeff Newbold.
Hi, folks. My name is Jeff Newbold. I live at four eleven McMillan Street. I'm going to make this really short and sweet. In your consideration of the vacation of Fourth Street, I would challenge any of you that believes that this is going to be a benefit to the hospital, trade houses with me and come and ride that benefit. And with that, I yield my hand.
Thank you. Forgive me as I'm trying to read the signature. Elliot Larson.
Hi, my name's Elliot Larson, four fifteen McMillan Street. I have lived forty-plus years at this residence. My wife Debbie and myself are grateful that Fort Atkinson has a hospital for our city. I personally just don't understand the reasoning that the hospital has to propose to block off Fourth Street between Munn Street and Armenia. The hospital has or had options to consider for parking rather than discontinuing that. So my concern is the traffic flow, especially for the people that are on McMillan Street and Armenia that are off of the Sherman. If you block that off, there's going to be a lot going on there. And right now, the street of McMillan Street is, is, needs repair. And so I don't know, I think the people in the community don't know how the plan is going to be exactly. Because that street needs to be fixed before you would shut this down. And so I'm worried about that because people are having trouble getting out of their driveways. If you're going to have more traffic on those two aspects, if you're going to shut that off. And so I'm concerned about that. Put yourself in the shoes of some of these residents pertaining to Armenia and McMillan and some other areas. We the people, we the people want you to look at this situation and help us. There are twenty-two people that have objected this. And they all live on Fourth Street or abutting to Fourth Street. And there's more than, you read the emails, I presume, and so I'm not going to repeat them. So I hope that you consider that, please consider the impact vacating Fourth Street this would have on all the residents and the whole area of the city. This could be a precedent of something else too. So I hope you consider that. Thank you very much.
This will be a first call for any other public comments on the public hearing of the vacation of North Fourth Street. That is for either virtual or in-person. This is a second call for public hearing.
My name is Jim Nelson. I'm the senior vice president of finance and strategic development for Fort Health Care. I live at four eighteen Hickory Street. First of all, I want to thank you for letting me address the council on the closure of the petition to close Fourth Street. Fort Health Care has been ranked a top hundred hospital, rural hospital in the nation, plus for a top hundred workplace. We've done it for several years. And that recognition is that we've never sold out. They just happen because of what we do and how we do it. A big reason why we do so well is we plan for our future. And we get the support from our community to make it happen. The petition to close Fourth Street is a result of our discussions with the city of Fort Atkinson to help us current challenges of parking as well as anticipated projects that we have in the future. When we did our two thousand and four edition, we maxed out the parcel land that was the hospital currently sits. When we maxed that site out, we already started planning for where that future would be and how it would occur. Then city manager John La Mette was working with, working on the city's first comprehensive plan. And we worked with him and we all agreed that a focused growth towards the north would be the most prudent and the least disruptive for the hospital to continue to grow in their current site. That's why you see the block nearly north of the hospital campus identified as the growth area for medical services in the current comprehensive plan. Fort Health Care began purchasing houses to the north right at that same time, knowing that someday we'd need to be ready for our next expansion. Last year, we communicated the city of readiness of the next step. And granting the closure of Fourth Street will allow us to convert Fourth Street into the area of where those four houses currently sit to the north of our campus and to accommodate our current and anticipated needs. Anticipated needs involve moving some plant operations back to the hospital campus where we can be more efficient and also fiscally responsible. In addition, Fort Health Care is working to develop the area where the current remote parking lot sits, that seven-plus acre lot, into some needed housing for our community. The four houses will be relocated if we get Fourth Street vacated, just a couple hundred feet to the northeast where they currently sit. We're working with the city to re-zoning in that area so we can put a street parallel to the Florin Street area. We anticipate the new street to be the first effort to develop in the remaining four areas for some additional housing. That happens to be the area, not coincidental, but the area where the new TID district is that the city created on January first of this year. The new planned parking lot to the area where the houses get moved to the area developed to the north of our campus will be coming back to the city and the planning commission over the next couple of months. So we'll continue to work. We thank you for your support and help. I think part of the reason why we are a top hundred workplace is the support we get from our community that makes a strong foundation. So we just want to thank you for all of your support and help.
We'll have you approach the elector, state your name and your address.
Hi, Jodi Ralats, one-two-four-five Chinet Street. My question is, when the gentleman before said, oh, have you, I think you've gotten the emails. I didn't see anybody react. So have you gotten emails from people? Because like, I'm coming trying to learn about city government and how you guys work. And I don't see any discussion really. It's like it's brought up and so I'm like, the homeowners are very concerned about this. And if he's lived there forty years, forty years of winters, holy cow. That, I mean, that says a lot why I agree that the hospital's great to have and stuff. I just can't see.
So we do receive emails. Not only do we receive emails from individual constituents and have individual conversations with our constituents, but anything that is officially received and documented by the city is passed along to us as well. So when there is reference to, have you seen emails? We have all seen the emails.
And then are they like?
Also, they were all in the packet? They were all in the city council packet that's available on the website?
Okay, because I did see that they have a packet, but I didn't go into that. I went into the other thing.
Those were all the support and opposition emails and petitions that came in are all included in that packet? This is the public hearing portion?
Right.
So there's not going to be discussion amongst the city council? There's an action item later on the agenda where there may be?
The only thing I will just mention too is any individuals who did email us directly. I know I personally responded to those individuals. We are not allowed to respond to the group to discuss because that actually is against the law. It violates open banking laws. And all the other sheets in the, in the packet, all of that information has been made available to us.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
It's the second call for public hearing. It's the third and final call for the public hearing relating to the vacation of North Fourth Street. Seeing none, hearing none, we will move right along to agenda item number four, which is public comment. Same rules will apply as we had during the public hearing. Please approach the elector and state your name, address, and contact information. And just remember that no action will be taken on public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on our agenda. This is a first call for public comment. This is a second call for public comment. This is a third and final call for public comment. Seeing none, hearing none, we will move on to agenda item number five, which is our consent agenda. The consent agenda that is outlined below is presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed. Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Agenda item six is petitions, requests, and communications. Six A is the presentation of the police department lifesaving awards to Officer Amelia Adsett, Officer Brett Dunkelberger, and telecommunicator Hannah Cleven.
Well, everyone, thanks for letting us do this at the council again. It means a lot to us to do it publicly to recognize the great employees ahead of the city. Earlier this year, on December, actually last year, on December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, our, our agency received an hour-long call from a citizen who was calling in about her husband who had fallen. And it was determined that he was not breathing. The call was answered by telecommunicator or dispatcher Hannah Cleven, who was working that shift. She took the call and immediately paged out an ambulance to start responding to the scene. During that time, Hannah then returned back to the caller and started doing what we would call telecommunicator CPR, T CPR, leading the caller through CPR on the person that was before them. She was able to do that without hesitation while handling multiple other things that are going on in the dispatch center. From communicating with the ambulance responding to the scene, with two officers also responding to the scene, and also for fire rescue. So imagine communicating with all of those different responders, talking with someone in distress on the phone. Oh, and also did I mention the phone was ringing because other people needed that police assistance as well at the same time? So a lot going on all at once. Hannah was able to manage all of this seamlessly and express no stress whatsoever in her voice or her actions. She immediately began to guide the caller through CPR while officers and ambulances responded and was able to do two cycles of CPR before the first officer arrived on scene. Insert Officer Dunkelberger. Officer Dunkelberger, first officer on scene, immediately entered the home and saw the male laying on his back in the living room. The male's face was purple and Officer Dunkelberger checked for a pulse and couldn't find one. He immediately started chest compressions. And while doing this, insert Officer Adsett, who then arrives on scene with an AED. While Officer Dunkelberger is doing CPR, Officer Adsett is setting up the AED, placing it on the victim. And they never lose a beat between the two of them working as a team. A shock was administered to the, to the person and chest compressions were continued by Officer Dunkelberger. During the second set of chest compressions, Officer Dunkelberger believed the color in the male's face was starting to come back. He was also able to find the pulse after that shock was delivered. A few moments after that, the AED started to analyze and started acknowledging that there was a pulse. And then ambulance and fire rescuer arrived on scene and took over. So a really great example of really good teamwork between three, two officers and a dispatcher that really made a positive impact. I just want to, I lost my spot here. It's nice to know that the person that the officers helped made a full recovery and is doing well today. One of the things when we elect or when we come up with these awards is that they're nominated by members of the agency. It's not just me that decides I want to give somebody an award. These awards are written, approved, and awarded by the agency and all the members of the agency. So you know that this is, they are worthy of it. Captain Chad Lang, retired, is the one who wrote up this recommendation for the awards to our committee. And I want to read something that he wrote. He said, seeing dispatcher Cleven take this call was absolutely amazing. With multiple things going on, sending out pages, answering radio traffic, phones ringing, et cetera, she was able to remain calm and provide lifesaving CPR instructions to the caller. I feel her actions along with the actions taken by Officer Dunkelberger and Officer Adsett on scene played a huge role in the patient making it through this medical incident. So without further ado, I'd like to invite Officer Adsett, Officer Dunkelberger, and telecommunicator Hannah Cleven up to receive awards. So first Amelia Adsett. This is our lifesaving award. It's one of the top awards our agency gives out. It's for the prompt and unselfish act of rendering aid and assisting, assisting assistance to another human being resulting in saving of a life. So here's your medal. Here's your certificate for the prompt and unselfish act of rendering aid and assistance to another human being resulting in saving of a life. This is Officer Brett, Officer Brett Dunkelberger's second lifesaving award. So his pin actually has two stars on it. It is just like the one here, but two stars on it, so we'll replace this one as it's the second person you save since being employed with our agency. Congratulations. And dispatcher Cleven? This, hers looks a little bit different. This is our telecommunicator award. It's a top award given out to our dispatcher. And it is awarded to law enforcement dispatcher whose actions assisted in the saving of a life. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And you.
That shows how fortunate we are to even need to have these people serving emergency response positions. So thank you again. Everyone is still getting photos. All right, we will move on to item sixteen, which is an annual item. This is the review of possible action relating to proclamation recognizing Fort Atkinson as the intersectional peony city of Wisconsin.
Hello, thank you. This is again our annual decision to request from the state that the city of Atkinson be the intersectional peony city of Wisconsin. The museum does have a section that are here in terms of the generosity of the Andersons to our community. We have, in our public garden, there's a recorded garden public collection of Andersons intersectional peonies in the world. More than sixty of their plants. And they're extremely unique. And I won't get into the finances because I don't really understand all of its magic. But they are extremely unique and we are glad to be able to recognize them. And to, to remember and to recognize and to work out the years and helping others.
I won't read the whole proclamation, but I will read one section of it that just highlights how unique this is and how lucky we are to call this, to call Fort Atkinson home to, to this proclamation. Whereas the city of Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin is the home of Roger Anderson's famous Bart Zella intersectional peony, which after fifteen years of diligent work, first bloomed in nineteen eighty-six and is considered by peony experts to be the most perfect yellow peony in the world and which received the highest American Peony Society Gold Medal Award and the Royal Horticultural Society Award of Garden Merit in two thousand and twelve. It's pretty amazing for us to be able to say that that is right here in Fort Atkinson.
And we have several labels of Bart Zella in the museum. They're the pretty yellow ones that, they're the ones that are recognized.
And anticipating when they'll be up?
We say late May, early June. It really depends on Mother Nature. Sometimes it's more like mid-May, but usually late May, early June is when we can say that they are at their peak. So that's why we usually request for the first weekend in June to be recognized as the intersectional peony city of Wisconsin. Is at that point we know we something to believe unless we've had a horrible spring. I move to approve the proclamation recognizing Fort Atkinson as the intersectional peony city of Wisconsin.
Second.
Motion and second and discussion. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? And motion carries.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Takes us to agenda item seven, resolutions and ordinances. Seven A is the review on possible action relating to a resolution discontinuing a portion of North Fourth Street between Armenia Street and McMillan Street in the city of Atkinson, Wisconsin.
Thank you. The Fourth Street discontinuance is before this evening. It's, it has been through a fairly involved public process that is set out the state statute. And just a quick review of that, there were several, two actually, information sessions held by Fort Health Care early on. And then on January twenty-eighth, it came before this body as a draft resolution indicating that that we were going to consider this within the public forum. It came before the, the planning commission on February the twenty-eighth, who had a fairly involved discussion along with a similar forum for public input as well at the beginning of the meeting. It did pass the planning commission meeting at the, on the twenty-eighth. And we've had, I think, three different notices in the paper to conform with the statute to list a class-three notice on the discontinuance. So before us this evening then is the resolution to consider the discontinuance. As I've said a number of times in these, these meetings, the coexistence of a hospital in a town of our size, a great neighborhood that we have, clearly demands compromise. I'm sure this isn't the first time we've had these types of discussions within the city council chambers. The review by staff related to this was put before you in memo. There were a number of items that were brought up by the public through the various forums for public comment, through emails to city staff. I'll just touch on a couple of those here that I think were kind of the common ones. The first was, was traffic. We did look at traffic. I did reach out to both the Fort Atkinson Police Department and the Fire Department to look at it from their perspective. They had no concerns. I think Chief Bump really put it best that it would be a change, but it would be a change that we would eventually get used to in terms of losing that section of Fourth Street. From the engineering side of things, there are two types of traffic that we look at. There's transient traffic or traffic that's just simply passing through, and then there's local traffic. I think the impact of the transient traffic certainly will be significant. Fourth Street does not have any stop signs along that stretch. Once you turn onto it from Sherman Avenue or from High Street. So it is kind of a nice cut through if you're an efficiency type. So that will obviously go away if the vacation is approved. The other traffic is local traffic. So folks that live in and around the area that are used to taking this for various activities, to go to work, to go to the park, whatever it may be. And obviously you can't travel on the street through that area if it is discontinued. So certainly there will be some local impacts as well. None of these rise to the level of concern from city staff with respect to the ability of the corridor to handle the transportation and the rerouting traffic. I don't have any safety concerns at the moment, but we obviously would keep track of this should it pass. And we are very much adept at managing these situations if they come up. So if we need to put in stop signs, yield signs, various things like that for traffic calming, we can, we can do that fairly efficiently. The other was stormwater concerns, light concerns, and screening concerns, as well as property values. I can't speak to the property values. We don't really have a good way of, of really answering that question, other than to acknowledge that the question came out. The other three will be dealt with specifically within the planning commission. The site plan review for any parking area, whether it includes the vacation of Fourth Street or does not, will come back before the planning commission. We will look at those elements in detail through that body. So I feel very confident that we can put together a parking lot that will be as aesthetically pleasing within the neighborhood and also as, as economy as it could possibly be. So the statute itself that governs all of this does have a provision in it that indicates that one-third of the property owners who are abutting, meaning actually have frontage on North Fourth Street, if they file a formal written objection, if one-third of those abutting property owners file a formal written objection that the vacation would pass city council by a supermajority, in this case, four of five council members voting for. That would require twenty-one objections. City staff have received nineteen objections today. I will note that there was a comment earlier about twenty-two objections. The statute does require that the property owner submits that objection. And we had several that were from renters in that area. We did reach out to those individuals and try to indicate to them that that statute required the owner. I think one of those we were in touch with. So we did try to, to reach out. Again, with the staff review, I think the, the recommendation from staff really settles on, on one thing, and that is the comprehensive plan. So we have gone through a fairly involved effort within the city and looking at what we want to be in the future. And that is called the comprehensive plan. We look at that as city staff to guide most of the decisions that we supply to you in the form of recommendations. So city staff recommend approval of the street vacation on North Fourth Street because it is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. I will note that, you know, this isn't a situation I will note that, you know, this isn't a situation of, you know, Fort Healthcare is a major part of our community, and this isn't a situation of they say junk, we say how high. This is a situation where planning has gone into this many years in advance, and the comprehensive plan has encompassed that planning. If you search the comprehensive plan, there are a number of references in there to Fort Healthcare, not just simply in maps and things of that nature. So I really do feel that from the city staff's perspective, the comprehensive plan has served us well in this capacity. But certainly, City Council is the independent body, and we have the last say or the discussion. So if you have any answer, any questions associated with this request?
Can you, I know I have bombarded you guys with questions over the last couple of weeks, specifically over the last couple of days, just to make sure that I certainly have the clarifications and information that I needed. One of the things that I think would just be nice if you can maybe speak to is, I think there's been some concern that, you know, this was Fort Healthcare's number-one priority, so it was the only thing that was pursued, and that's what's being asked for. Can you just speak a little bit to kind of what some other options were that were looked at and why ultimately it was determined that those options weren't going to address the parking problem that Fort Healthcare is looking at?
Yeah, I think, and this is somewhat second-hand from Mr. Nelson, but I think the big thing that we heard from Fort Healthcare was the remote aspect of parking was a major concern. So, not only in employee retention, but employee safety and just simply logistics, that having the ability to put employees and patrons of the hospital on hospital grounds was a major goal of theirs. I think that is a short-term goal. I think the longer-term goal of Fort Healthcare is to look at expansion. And so, we may see that in the future, five years from now, ten years from now, we're not talking about parking expansion, but facility expansion. And so when you think of it in that light, when you look at other alternatives, such as going to a, there's a lot, I forget the address, but a lot between the current remote lot and the hospital campus, the lack of contiguity of that just doesn't make sense for the long-term goals. Certainly would maybe accommodate one less street to cross, but with the goal of trying to get everybody on a single campus, it just didn't, it didn't work. The other options that were looked at, we've exhausted all of the on-street parking options, and that has been within the community or that neighborhood there, something that I think over the years has been discussed quite a bit. And so we really didn't have a whole lot of alternatives to look at under that.
I will just add one thing. When we initially started these discussions, there were folks from the hospital indicated that they were purchasing other properties around to the east and to the west of the campus and suggested, you know, possibly putting in several small parking lots. And that was a nonstarter, that was inconsistent with our comprehensive plan, and it doesn't make sense when you look at screening requirements and intrusiveness to the neighborhood. So we really did work with the hospital to focus their efforts to go north, which is what is included in our comprehensive plan and I believe has been included in the last two iterations of that document.
I'm going to speak in one more here, and then I'll share the space. I just want to address, Mr. Larson had brought up a concern about road repairs needed on McMillan. Can you just talk a little bit, if you know of anything that's planned for that road at the time, or more so, you know, if this would pass, kind of what does that timing look like of when that section of Fourth Street would be closed?
Sure. So, the optimist, we did fix a good chunk of McMillan. So it wasn't the area that Mr. Larson's homes in front of, because I'm well aware of the terrible nature of that. We are waiting for water main. So we do have McMillan Street to the east of the hospital that is on our list. I think it is in, it's within the next five years, if I'm not mistaken, for water main replacement. And that's the timeline we'll fix the road above. So we fixed McMillan to the north of roughly Florence Street last year and year before, if I'm not mistaken. The water main under there is in relatively good shape, but the water main to the south of that is going to have to be replaced before we'll put money into the road above. So it is on the list, but I don't have any immediate answers, I guess, for that improvement.
And then what would be the timing of Fourth Street? If this were to pass, what would the?
Yeah, so the process, I think, the process would be, we would move through a CSM, much like we'll see here shortly, that would really define the area of Fourth Street to be vacated. We would also include in that CSM the easements, because we do have utilities in that area. I have no concerns about being able to service those utilities with the easements in place. So I would imagine within a couple of months perhaps, we would have the formal document of vacating. I know the hospital has indicated if the vacation occurs that they hope to be parking in an expanded lot by Thanksgiving, so that's the long-term construction timeline.
Thank you.
Do we have an opinion or a feeling on the congestion of the existing parking? Is it congested, not congested, we need to add parking?
We did require them to do a parking study at the very beginning of these discussions, I think, perhaps a year ago. That parking study did indicate that with all of the future plans, remember, their plan is to bring many of these outlying facilities under one roof, with that consolidation, that the parking needs were going to go up significantly. It did indicate that the amount of parking on the site would be adequate, but there is no additional area, I guess, or no offer in that. It looked pretty tight.
I know, I read the letters that I saw, and they made references to other options. And I drove around the hospital till I was blimmin' faced, I couldn't see another option versus taking just a different set of houses to make the parking lot, which would only shift the problem from one group to a different group of citizens.
Yeah, and manager, we were pointed out that, you know, the homes that have been purchased, I think directing this into a single area to the north is critical. So we don't end up with little parking lots, small parking lots throughout the established neighborhood.
I would also add that that parking study is in the council package.
That parking study was a fire hose of information. So I guess, and I'm just, I'm still trying to pick through it, right? But if I could, I'm still trying to understand, like, if we don't vacate Fourth, still going to probably pave where the houses are north of North Fourth Street? I don't have a good understanding of, is that going to be 100% capacity? Will that allow for the growth? And that's not clear to me, I apologize if I haven't had the time to not ask my question before today.
No, not at all. The, so, the way that I've looked at this is, and I didn't understand it from the beginning either, until conversations with Fort Healthcare, the long-term plan for Fort Healthcare in terms of expansion of facilities in the future rests on the vacation of Fourth Street. So if they're unable to vacate Fourth Street now to gain additional parking, how then will they be able to expand 10 years from now? And with that, you know, we don't have a crystal ball by any means, but that certainly helped me understand Fort Healthcare's situation and saying now is the time, you know, to sort of follow through on the planning that's been done and ask for the vacation of Fourth Street. We need the parking within the short term, but I think the long-term option of being able to expand to the north beyond parking, you know, facilities or things like that, is really a part of this discussion.
And I guess there has been comments made in the letters that were sent to us, as we all stated earlier, that there's not a lot of stop signs or yield signs a lot on North Fourth Street, and people may use that as, you know, speedyway. I don't know how they can speed through that with potholes on their road.
Oh, and potholes.
I guess, I, my view of viewing that, those comments, like, a parking lot isn't an answer. Like, other answers could be stop signs and yield signs, right? So it's hard for me to view that as a solution to the traffic. But another question leading up to the traffic would be, I don't, I don't know if there's a great way to understand how traffic would change. Would there be more traffic along? McMillan and?
Arby's.
It's based on Arby's, yeah. Is there an estimation of how that traffic pattern would change?
I don't think the patterns will change. I think as they bring additional clinics under that roof, certainly the volume will change. There is, there is very, there is almost no concern from my part of the world as the city engineer and director of public works about the ability of our current road network in that area to accommodate traffic. Where, you know, if we need to get to a level ten before we start to have a conversation here about, geez, what are we going to do with all these cars? We're at a level two or three, just to kind of put it in some perspective. So you're right in saying that it is difficult to understand how all the patterns will play out. But how they play out, I think, is less of a concern for me because of the established network that we have in place there. And we will see some things that we didn't anticipate. We've done that before. It's kind of the situation where as soon as we pave a street, the neighbors call within a month and say that traffic is speeding down the street because there's some potholes, right? So we will have situations that we'll need to attend to. We're well aware of that and have the experience with that. And I think we'll be able to manage that as they arise.
And then, another question. Let's just say that this does not happen. What would stop, what would stop, like, would that even prevent the hospital in the future from petitioning for this again down the road?
I don't think so. There's no statute or anything like that that wants you to try, or really take from that.
And just to, like, I mean, that does make a difference in how I view the, you know?
I guess, my question, we've talked about that remote lot quite a bit. And maybe I don't know if you can answer this or not, but it sounds like the Fort Healthcare's intent is to just continue use of that remote lot. Would that be happening immediately after this new parking lot is constructed? Or do we know what kind of timeline we're looking at, yet on that?
I don't specifically. That area will be receiving, I don't think it's in the remote lot specifically. I'm trying to think of the map. But we are, if the vacation occurs, well, regardless, I think of whether the vacation occurs, those four houses need to be moved, and those are slated to go up into that area on the backside of Florence Street. I don't think that that gets in, I'm looking for an agreement. I don't think that gets into the existing parking area. But there has been discussions about that parking area going away and then being available for new housing. So some redevelopment in that area with discussions about single-family residential senior housing and things of that nature.
That was my understanding, but I just wanted to confirm that that was still in place.
Just kind of touching along with that, and Rebecca, this is maybe more of a question for you to answer, but, you know, I think we would all agree that one of the hardest roles that we play in this position is weighing that balance between resident concerns, resident needs, and then overall best, most beneficial impact for the city as a whole, so for all of our residents. So could you maybe just speak a little bit to what, you know, what those potential impacts for the city would be if this remote lot land is made available for housing? If these four homes are relocated to that, I believe it's technically McMillan property in that TID? You know, what does that, what does that look like in terms of impact for the city as a whole?
Sure, I mean, I can speak in general terms here, but the city did establish a tax increment district number ten in the area that we described. So not including the hospital campus, not including the single-family homes up there, but including the property on McMillan that had a former, had a building on it that was recently, within the last two, two or three years demolished, including that remote parking lot and including some other parcels in that area that are ready for potential redevelopment. It also extends to the west to include the Lorman property, as well as the D.B.O. site on the west side of the train tracks. It is a light elimination TID, so it will be around for twenty-seven years. There's a project plan that is on the city's website that has potential projects, potential redevelopment opportunities, potential new roadways and infrastructure that the city may, if development drives, redevelopment drives those projects, the city may engage in developer, with developers for private investment that would go into the tax increment district, and then eventually, when that district closes beyond the general tax rule. So the other benefit to tax increment financing is that the city, through that TID, not through the general tax dollars, can provide incentives for redevelopment, which would be very important in this area of the city. So I think freeing up that land from a parking lot would, for any potential redevelopment, would only add significant value to the overall tax base in short-term within the TID, long-term for the city, benefiting the city and all the tax institutions and tax agencies.
I think the only other thing I just want to add inside the question, but I just wanted to thank the Fort Healthcare team for their extensive communication. I got thrown a lot of questions their way as well over the last few weeks. And just to thank you to all the residents that did reach out. We don't get to see a ton of resident engagement in this role, and I wish there was more and more often. But I do, you know, I appreciate it, I think I can speak for most of us when I say that. You know, specifically, there were some emails from Mr. Steve Benson that led to me asking some questions to our team and to the Fort Healthcare team that I probably wouldn't have thought otherwise, and it helped me just learn more as a whole about this process and gain some additional clarification. So I, I just appreciate the communication and the engagement overall about the whole shopping, so, thank you.
So the tax benefit or negative benefit to the city once this project is completed, assuming that it's passed, is based on the parking lot? Will the off-premise parking lot, whether that's developed or not? Or whether without that issue, does this allow the city, is it a plus for the city? A sidestep for the city, or a negative for the city and the tax base?
I would say it's a push. There's really no, there's no impact to the city from the tax standpoint of the street vacating, the potential development of that lot and things like that, if tied to this. And I'm not sure that necessarily is, but that certainly would be a positive for the city for housing and certainly act on.
Thank you.
I would add that I was asked by Andy to review the loss for City of McMillan, and I have, and I believe that that is defines what, a definition of what abutting means. But I think that we need the qualification to sixty-six point one zero zero three, following sub-four. I've been in discussions with Attorney Ramfoud Guardi, representative of the, for Healthcare. He has accepted service for them. I do believe, though, that under sub-C, there is a sentence, a sentence which says, if a, an objection is filed, discontinuance may be ordered by only a favorable vote of two-thirds. So I think we are in supermajority, so we would need the full votes, the two-thirds, which is a bit different, but I think that that, I think that sentence only needs to be in the fourth one.
Thank you for that clarification.
You know, I thought about this, this issue a lot, and I echo what Councilmember Harwood said. We had a lot of resident engagement on this issue more than we usually get, and that was, that was a good thing. And I, I do empathize with the people that lived in that neighborhood. I know that this would represent a pretty major change, and I get the concerns about the change in, in traffic patterns and potentially effects on property values. We shouldn't, none of us here, I don't think, are qualified to gauge. You know, I take it seriously. Like I mentioned a few weeks ago, I grew up in that neighborhood, and actually, the residents who lived in the house I grew up on filed an objection to this discontinuance, so. But at the same time, I think we need to consider what the alternatives would have been. And, you know, I think back to a handful of years ago, Fort Healthcare bought land west of the bypass and was considering building a new hospital out there. And while that maybe would have been exciting and, you know, presented some new, new opportunities for our community, it would have left a huge hulking property that would have been extremely challenging to redevelop. And I don't know realistically what that would have looked like. So I think, I think given that the hospital's been so successful there for a number of decades, I do think staying in place is the best thing for the community. And long-term, knowing just in the near-term future what population metrics look like in the area. We do have an aging population. Having Fort Healthcare here providing services is only a huge benefit to our community, so. I also want to point out again, because I fear this might get lost in some discussions if we do move forward with this, this is a property owner seeking to redevelop their own property. This isn't houses being seized by the city or anything like that. This is a property. This is a property owner seeking to redevelop their own property. And it is in concert with the, uh, comprehensive plan. So I just think those are important points for people to remember.
I, like Bruce and probably many of you have put on plenty of miles driving North Fourth Street and, and McMillan and that whole general area in the last month. Um, even today, as I was doing laps around the hospital to try and get a little clearer picture again, um, it, it was interesting to me. I believe there's a shuttle running from the employee parking lot. I got to witness employees getting into and out of a shuttle in order to get to work. I, I noticed the, the, the vacant lot of building that has been razed. Um, I looked at traffic flows. I, I tried to take into account everything that we had heard from our constituents. And at the end of the day, I, I, I strongly felt that if, if this situation of having a parking lot and a vacant lot was occurring anywhere else within our community, in a, perhaps a more public part of our community versus, um, being tucked up against, uh, a farm field, we would have heard about this a lot sooner. And, and I'm sorry that we didn't identify this area as something that needed attention earlier. And I'm glad that we have our comprehensive plan to fall back on and say, this is identified. This is something that can be developed and can be beneficial for the overall residents of our community. Um, so I, I think that, um, regardless of how the vote goes, Fort Healthcare put, put forward a very viable plan that does fall in concert with what we are hoping to achieve as a, as a city.
Sixty-four years ago, I was born in the very oldest part of that hospital. I've grown here my whole life. I watched many additions go on to that hospital as it got bigger, better, and serve our, our city's needs better and better all the time. I don't want to see that stop. I think that, I don't want to put a roadblock in front of them that says, okay, you're done getting bigger. You're done getting better. We're not gonna help you at all. I feel bad that my decision probably will make a few people unhappy with me. That's, that hurts me inside in a place I can't describe, but I think it was good for my city, is what I'm thinking.
If there's no other discussion, we seek a motion.
I would move to approve the resolution discontinuing a portion of North Fourth Street between Armenia Street and McMillan Street in the city of Fort Atkinson and Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Harwood?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
No.
President Shear?
Aye.
That's Mr. Harris.
Thank you.